We're live streaming.
We are live streaming.
Okay.
Welcome everybody to the workshop session, Monday, March twenty seven, twenty point three time is six point five, right, six twenty. So we'll start out with a low income housing water assistance program and low income energy assistance program. Who's presenting that?
Well, welcome.
Hi.
Please introduce yourselves and then you can go ahead with your presentation.
Sure. My name is Tracy Troya. I'm with the Department of Human Services. I work with public assistance programs and I do the bookkeeping and finance for the department. And I'm Michelle and I also work for services and I assist clients in completing the energy assistance applications. Process to communicate. So a little bit about the program. So LEAP has been in an assistance program that we've had for many years and in two thousand and twenty, they, the federal government passed down through ARPA funding to the state, assistance for the state to provide to each municipalities or counties in order to help assist in water payments for clients. With the ARPA funding, it is all filtered through the state. It's not something that is filtered or it's not a grant given to the county or the water municipality is from one whole. What the client does is they fill out their yearly leave application that goes from April first to, or excuse me, November first through April thirtieth of the following year. They have now added the water addendum for the past couple of years, which in turn allows for the client to then apply for any payments or billing interrangers to be assisted with. They have to qualify for LEAP in order to be able to receive this assistance program for this assistance. Let's see, where else am I going with this? What the state does is they in turn go through the application process, applicant is approved and then they contact the county and say, or the water municipality and say, hey, by chance, this person, they give you a list of who's qualified. In turn, the municipality provides the state with anyone, you know, what the amount is, interrangers goes back to the state and then the state filters by a process of direct deposit back to the county. Apparently they have a hundred and eighty municipalities or water public assistance companies working with LEAP. In our county, we have Silver Plume Empire Georgetown, Evergreen Metro and State Mary Waters District. This is, I know there's been some concerns by the board. We've provided some information and gone to the state. Have we had an opportunity or do you folks have questions for us or in ways and means of becoming a provider listed with the state, they have a vendor's or an approved vendor's information along with that a W nine would need to be provided as well as a direct deposit form. They send the remittance statement back to the county and then that would be applied to that individual's water bill as it was reported to the state. So there's no contract. It's basically as if the individual was paying their water bill. All the reporting back to the government is through the state, so the state holds all the books.
So would this go under a water relief committee? We have a committee that's, so would they go under that or just through the county?
We'd have to designate a staff person here to be the point person on this program and to administer it. So there would be some, some staff time to have to be committed to that. Right now we have a Patty who handles requests for payment plans and things like that. Normally she just handles those on her own, working with the customer unless there's some issue and then it might go to other staff members or to a committee, but we typically don't go that route unless there's some issue.
We have an estimate of how much administrative time we're gonna have that's additional to our current time.
Some additional reporting requirements to, once a program is completed, once they receive the monies.
But there's some to set it up and then some that will be continued right after.
I may be wrong, but I believe once the program's set up, obviously notice from the state that the funding is coming and then we just need to document how that funding was used.
So we don't anticipate a lot of time once it's set up then, right?
Is the documentation done by us or done through the state?
You would need to provide, so the state will come to you and say, okay, Idaho Springs, these are the clients that have been accepted. What are their past due bills? You reply with this person's past due bill, the amounts for whoever's been itemized. And then in turn, they send a remittance statement and provide you with a direct deposit into the city accounts.
So I didn't see where the qualifications, but I assume this is a lower income qualification, right?
Absolutely. And I think something important to note too is what Tracy said about the window applying for applications. So applications are only being taken through end of April. And so right now there could be folks that have been approved, but cannot be paid without the agreement in place. And then we would have a handful of applications still coming.
We do know we have one individual who's already been approved.
And so that would be kind of a one-time thing, one longer list if there's more than the one that would come in and then just a handful of applications potentially for the next five weeks. So it's kind of a, we don't know if the funding will be there next year, but it's kind of a good time to be, you know, to test it out too.
And I might have missed this already, but is this full relief? Is this partial relief? Is this?
Whatever in arrears.
In the rears, okay.
Any points to it?
And then they did discount on what's upcoming currently.
That's how LEAP works for the energy assistance for heat. So that would be gas or electric or propane delivery. This is just the assistance for the water bill, the one-time deal.
Oh, that's it.
So third arrears per se.
Okay.
Like we're trying to collect the money from them, which is clearly impossible, we know. This program would fill with gap number one.
Start them out at zero.
And it would put them back at zero, which would be benefit, a benefit to them.
Sure.
One less stressor in their lives.
Yeah, right.
But I think it's, I think good for them, good for us.
Sure.
It's a win for everybody by participating in this program.
But they, but there would be no, no discount for upcoming bills.
No, we do have our payment plan that we give people here and so it's really for people who are in arrears as well, but they can pay over time as well. So that's what we currently do.
What happens to the penalties? Cause there may have penalties that are late, right?
Shit, same current, correct?
So they pay penalties?
Although whatever the last two.
Yeah, so that would probably save admin time.
It's gonna save admin time because you're not calling these people.
Right, sure.
It's gonna save admin time and it's also gonna put them in a better position.
City time. Of course, shutting one off.
It's helping people that need help.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, people legitimately need assistance. They're getting assistance they deserve, but that's really how it works.
Can the client sign a waiver for that information to be from you as the
They can see their ability to be released or say, make sense.
Sure.
What are we looking for tonight?
Just looking for direction if this is a program that council would like to.
Absolutely.
Especially as a city, we have to sign the water vendor agreement to enter into this, correct?
So water, the new water agreement and W nine and the direct.
Which, I think makes perfect sense. I read the agreement. It's pretty straightforward.
Right, true.
So I mean, it's not just for everybody that's behind. It's for the people that are behind and qualified.
People that qualify for LEAP program by income, same circumstance, now would qualify for this. Yeah. We aren't having to bet.
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody's taking means of advice for that, for sure.
Yeah.
And I know many of the other units have been extremely happy with that.
I think it's the right thing to do for to get you the opportunity. If this is all it takes, just assigning and processing direct deposit and putting towards bills versus making phone calls for what we're currently doing to get those arrears.
Yep.
Benefit for everybody.
Okay, we have our direction. Thank you for coming tonight and thank you for addressing the questions that we had earlier on and some of the concerns we had that really helped get us to this point, I think. So I know it took some time, but thank you.
We appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, downtown marketplace update. Mobile hub land swap and building relocation memorandum of understanding.
I'll take the lead on this one. This is the product of many conversations with the property owner, Deb Rutzbeck, to relocate her several businesses or the buildings that she owns and her tenants to the other side of the intersection to the parking lot that the city owns. And then we do a land swap and the reason for this is to be able to have the necessary land for the mobility hub and parking structure there where her buildings are today. So this, you know, this has been a lot of meetings that we've had with her, a lot of back and forth. She's reviewed this MOU. This isn't binding, but it just states in writing the culmination of all of our discussions with Deb. So we wanted to bring it to city council and make sure that you all were aware of where we are with this. I think if council is good with this MOU, the next step would be to retain an architect to actually start the design for the new buildings. So the space that's roughly the equivalent in square footage of the space she has now for her businesses.
Will, will it be kind of the same shape?
For about three buildings? She has expressed a preference for actually two buildings. Oh, two buildings and that, you know, obviously we have her as part of the design. We would lead it, but she would be the user and she would have to say, but I think what we talked about different iterations of it, three buildings, two buildings. And I think what she would like ultimately is to have two buildings there.
She's looking for the same square footage.
Same square footage. That would be the understanding. The land, square footage is about the same. The land's about the same swap and then the square footage would be out the same.
And then who's developing the building?
The city one.
And then three, three businesses in two buildings.
Right, right.
So are we just doing site plans right now or are we going more extensive in the design?
We, if the council is good with MOU, we would move into the design stage for the buildings.
And do we have a cost on that?
Don't have a cost. That would come back to council.
Okay, so we're not doing anything cost-wise. We're not spending money. We're just
That's right. We just wanna make sure that we're all of agreement on the MOU or NFR, then we can move to the next stage as far as
As long as we start designing, you'll come back with some kind of costs estimate.
Yep.
And then at that point, will we get a cost estimate on the development of the building also?
I would, I would like to make that part of the design.
Right, because that's a thing part of this.
It is.
Do they have enough parking spaces on some move over?
We have done some initial review of that with our, with our planner and with our city engineer. And yes, there might need to be some variances as far as set packs and things like that. But it looks like you should be able to leave the amount of parking there. They'll have more parking than they have today.
There's nothing.
No downside to doing a variance there and doing right for the problem. It's not losing any using the space or any access restrictions and if you go back to the seat out right away, so it would be the MOU makes sense to plan with that makes sense. The next step definitely would be figure what that looks like.
Yep.
And then from there you can develop a cost for what the building's cost, two buildings is definitely cheaper than three.
Yep.
Under the current building fee cost right now.
Especially their metal.
Well, I think the other advantage is long-term is we're replacing buildings that historically are not in the best condition with something that will, well, foreseeably lasts.
Will make it look historical, a little bit of historical flair on the outside.
Yeah, and we should match this to downtown, that's where it's just, and it's all of that is beneficial. So I think everybody, first thing they see when they get off the highway, right?
Right. Especially if we're once planned to next door. You know.
Yeah, and it goes right to the park with the access and then it all continues development, which is all beneficial.
True. And one other exciting piece of this MOU is, is moving the train station she owns back down to its, close to its original location and making it a part of the mobility hub.
Which is a big thing, right?
That's huge.
Huge thing. And if you got moved out of town, it's unfortunate to get that back in.
And she's agreeable to that. We still have to work on the terms of that and what that looks like as you saw in the MOU.
How you feel about that though? To get that back in town, that's a really big deal.
Oh, man.
It's been moved before, so it's a framed building, so that's gonna be a lot easier to move.
Black on that one.
Yeah, just get that back within
We're agreeing to that part of it. Oh, yeah.
So they're gonna transfer water sewer taps or are they gonna have to establish rooms? We should be able to transfer because we're not adding taps to the system. My mind, this is my Yeah, move a location. So if we move locations and we have taps there and then we get had the existing taps that they're using, we're not we're not adding any use to the city. Therefore, we might have a double up for time or time of development. We have to double the taps in place, but we wouldn't have double the use. Right. But I think Who's, who's gonna?
I think that would likely be addressed when the properties, the property has changed its hands. I think maybe we might want to consider that for the part of that.
Yeah, I understand exchange.
Yeah.
Insulation.
Yeah.
Should be up with that, right?
That'd be part of the
Well, actually, if we're building a building, the installation will be on us.
Well, yeah, of course.
So, but the advantage of that is, is
There's not a new tap.
If we're, no new tap, we're paying the contractor and we're doing the oversight because our building, we have we've got quality assurance of the taps that are installed to our specification also, which should benefit the city longer.
Well, you can't tell them you're gonna build a building, not put a roof on it.
We can, but we won't do that. Yeah, I know where you're going with that. We, if we're building, we're hiring the contractor, therefore be you're responsible for the water and sewer installation.
Sure.
We're just paying the contractor to do so. And we're just expecting ourselves. Okay, we're gonna end up by your
I don't remember.
It's something like that.
I think it's ballpark.
Just slightly under fifty-five hundred square feet tall.
Wall three.
Anything else?
I will bring this back. I think this is on the agenda for consideration of approval at regular meeting, am I right?
I think you're right.
I think it is. So if council's good with this, it is on the agenda for the regular meeting for consideration of approval.
Play on.
Okay.
Okay, right. Downtown marketplace update.
Mayor Potem and council, SAP has been working with the Chamber of Commerce and downtown business owners to begin the programming for events on the minor street marketplace. I'm still the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce and Sadie, who is a chamber board member as well, is here with us. She has done the lion's share of the work here on getting the programming working and getting all the business owners to buy in and participate. The Coda that we have downtown, the common outdoor dining area started last year and that allows us to have common consumption of alcohol during certain events on the marketplace. It was absolute success last year. I don't think we can say anything otherwise. Chief, I think you said there was no problems that you noted with the carry of alcohol and I don't think Sadie, any business owners had any problems with it either. So we'd like to continue that this year, the big event, of course, being the Fourth of July. I can put a couple of highlights in the calendar and I'll let Sadie take it here. We have really focused this year on really building community centric events. That's the whole purpose of the marketplace to us. You know, the visitors enjoy it. I think Idaho Springs is now the number one place to take your dog in Colorado for a nice day. And like tons of lists like that, like just things like that where we come up, which is great, but we have really been focused on, you know, like they always say in chambers of commerce, shop local. Well, local means something different here in Idaho Springs than it does anywhere else because our local businesses serve our tourism businesses as the same spaces. And so we've really been trying to build events and things that are for residents to during both non-season times and during season times, like on Thursday nights, we have music and, and things like that. Another note for this year is Bojo's fiftieth anniversary. On April first, we're gonna close the block, the middle block, the sixteenth to fifteenth avenue block for a block party to celebrate their anniversary. Bojo's has got some events planned and there will be just a good celebration there. So that should be fun for everybody in the community to attend.
That's this Saturday.
That is this Saturday.
Coming up quick.
It didn't seem that close like when we started planning it, but here we are. Vehicle traffic on the street, we are proposing to end it on May eighth. That would allow outdoor areas to set up between the ninth and eleventh and the patio to open between the twelfth and the fourteenth, that first weekend right there, which would let us be ready for all those early summer holidays that happen. We plan to close the marketplace for the season on November first. We really had some success last year with the Christmas tree lighting event, which some of you attended. We had the reindeer. There was more people at that event than any year that I've been here. And we'd like to start building out some weekend type events or maybe we use sixteenth instead of the whole minor street to really have, you know, keep that community vibe going and do those kinds of events in the winter time. We just haven't really spent a lot of time developing any programming in that period. So we don't think the marketplace needs to be fully closed, but we'd just like to start, you know, building out those shoulder seasons a little bit. The other thing that we did this year that's a little bit different is we have started more strenuously posting the design standards for outdoor encroachment areas. There are certain rules that are, everybody agrees to when they do it. For instance, we are committed to maintaining emergency vehicle path through the middle of the street. So you know, cornhole boards are one thing, but we're not trying to have whiskey barrels full of water, you know, sitting where a fire truck can't get through. So that's something that we've really been talking to our truckers about.
They've been really, they've been really good.
Yeah.
Tommyknocker especially, in which they house the barrels.
Yeah.
We have not had a single issue with their response in downtown.
That's good. We very well, I think that our, all our business owners have done a really good job of, of trying to keep it clean. You know, we've talked about cleanliness of the area under the tables. That's always a challenge because we don't really have water to spray it down or anything. But everybody's committed to making this work. You know, the city has seen record sales tax numbers almost every month since marketplace opened. We've seen tangible benefits in the community from it. And I think it's something that is really the kind of, kind of a fun thing about Idaho Springs. So with that, Sadie, you wanna walk through the calendar and the programming and everything?
Yes. Hello. Thank you, council, for allowing me to come and speak before you guys today. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. Like John said, I think that the business owners and the city have really started to focus on continuing to expand the marketplace activation each year. So you continue to see iteration after iteration as we're moving towards the downtown master plan and really focusing on really continuing to see the marketplace grow. Like John spoke to, we are activating a little bit earlier this year. So we do have the pre-closure activity. One thing that I do wanna bring before council that's a little bit time sensitive is that we have a a plan and we've brought this to council before and this will be the first year we want to effectively do this. But we would like to be able to bring outside vendors onto minor as long as they are non-competitive businesses to minor. So these are outside vendors that would be allowed to come and activate on the minor street market during the activation period and they would be there to help fill in the spaces that are not activated by businesses. So it is a city right away. So we would like council kind of understanding that if a business is choosing not to activate the space in front of their business, that we have an agreement that we can activate that space. It will not be filled with anything that is again competitive. We're not gonna be putting food trucks or anything like that on the market. The one example that I can bring forth right now, I don't know if any of you guys attended Pumpkin Smash last year, but we had an enclosed axe throwing vendor. So it's a whole enclosed trailer and it does the axe throwing. It's a huge fun community draw. Everybody loved it. The guy was awesome. Really responsible gentleman that runs it. It's a small business and he would like to be able to come up. He would like his first event to be the Bojo's activation and then he would like to come up for all of our proposed large events throughout the season. So that is
Insured and he'd also offer the city insurance. And there's, so that's kind of how that we envisioned that would work. It's all, it's up to code and law for those kind of facilities and they have a staff person maybe.
Yeah, he also is willing to apply for a Idaho Springs business license as well. So he would pay the Idaho Springs business license fee. He would be listed, like John said, said Idaho Springs would be listed as an additional insured on his certificate of insurance as well. Cool. Okay, so the Bojo's thing is the first. John spoke to the design standards, which again, the big thing is that everybody this year is actually going to be making some significant improvements to their outdoor areas. Both Bojo's, Tommyknockers and Mountain Prime and Westbound being our anchor restaurants have all committed to really making significant improvements to their outdoor areas. Bojo's is planning a raised deck so that they have better water flow so that people can sit out there, even if there's water flowing with kind of a pergola looking thing. Tommyknockers is doing a really cool outdoor cooking kind of smoking kind of a thing. So there's gonna be food directly outside on minor. Really cool things happening with some of our newer businesses. So all of the businesses will be submitting these design and encroachment agreements over the next couple of weeks. John and I are gonna be reviewing them, making sure that they're reaching the standards that we want, that there isn't anything that's gonna be, you know, not to the standard that we're looking for and also especially for the Coda areas, making sure that they're meeting all the Coda standards so that we don't have any problems with any liquor violations. The first big event on minor will be the summer kickoff. So I'd like to, we would like to bring back the summer kickoff this year and have a summer kickoff parade as well as that will be kind of combining the graduation parade into the summer kickoff parade. Cause they actually fall on the same weekend this year due to the school calendar pushing into June now because of them not being in school on Fridays, I think. So I've been in contact with the high school and the parents for the graduation and it seems like that's gonna take alignment for there to be a graduation parade and a summer kickoff parade the first weekend in June. So that's going to be revitalizing that town appreciation. There's gonna be music. That will be the first activation of music. And there will be, again, the possibility of activating vendors on minor for this event. We're hoping to be able to have a pop-up kind of farmer's market style vendor selling fresh fruits and vegetables that during that time as well as our community, our community partners, nonprofits, being able to activate and be a part of minor street during those kind of events. So expanding this year will be the minor street market music program. In years past, we have done Tuesdays, Thursdays music. And again, as John said, these are geared towards our locals on off-peak period times during times of the day when it's off-peak as well. We are adding an additional music day this year. So we'll be doing Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, live music rotating each block. Tuesday will be the westbound and down Mountain Prime block. Wednesday will be the Bojo's block and Thursday will be mountain or will be Tommyknockers. And the Slaymakers are going to be co-sponsoring that music event with Tommyknockers. So those are going to be during that time, those blocks will be Coda. So that, that there will be signs posted and those will be Coda during that. Cornhole is coming back on Fridays. There will be a cornhole tournament starting on the second with the summer kickoff cornhole tournament. There are new bags. We have received a lot of feedback from businesses, community members and city council that were uncomfortable with the plastic beads that were in the cornhole bags. They break and then they're kind of like going all over the street and then getting washed into the water. That actually a beautiful solution was provided for us by Interstate Parking. Interstate Parking donated bags for this season that are filled with organic materials. That are filled with um organic material. So we'll be watching that from those bags pretty closely this summer to see how they are. We are pretty aware that when they get wet, they can get really bad. So we're just gonna kind of. Play it by ear, but at least we have a temporary um beginning solution. For the cornhole bags. Those bags are available for all the businesses now to start picking up at City Hall. It was really nice of Interstate to provide those. Um, Fourth of July again will be, as John mentioned, one of the big first events. Um, I am requesting a meeting with myself. John, um Andy, uh the mayor and uh Phyllis to make sure that the Fourth of July eh event is all-inclusive. And we're all on the same page as we're planning. That's kind of our staple event. Everybody comes to know it, love it. Um, so we wanna make sure it is as best as it possibly can be this year. August events, we will be doing the homecoming parade, bringing that back um into the downtown district. Um, as well as a town appreciation event. Um, Rapid Grass, we're gonna kind of hopefully combine the town appreciation event and Rapid Grass at the ballfields this year. There will be a nine eleven parade again on minor. It happened last year on minor. We'll again bring it back to minor this year. And then the last big event that we would, well, not last big event, but a new event that will be on minor this year. Um, we are. Ask, asking for this to be a full Coda event, so full block to block. Um, as a fall festival and a uh beer festival, kind of an Oktoberfest. It will be um a nonprofit event. So it'll be raising money for the Veterans Coalition. As well as um some other nonprofit partners in the community. The last event on minor every year is the trunk or treat. It's my favorite event of the whole season. It's a blast. Um, we have all the kids from Carlson and then we bring community partners down to minor. And have an awesome trunk or treat, huge thing. It's been an awesome event every year, putting the pumpkin. On the water wheel and just creating that. We are hosting, hoping to do a um fall decorating contest. Um, this year, something Idaho Springs is pretty well-known for is um our Halloween decorations throughout the community. So we would like to start highlighting that again as our focus on highlighting the off-offseason periods. To start bringing in some traffic around that time. So they'll be marketing um around that. Um, so those are the things that are coming for you guys. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, oh, we've already decided to schedule it. We'll get a detailed list of what you need, barricades. Things set up.
The.
Yeah.
So we, well, we know what to do.
We have had this conversation a little bit about flowers set up and everything. The barricades are on the street already. So they don't need to be placed, they just get moved to a position, but we do need to have a uh coordinating meeting about the opening for sure. And so we would definitely do that.
Now, who has that? I mean, Public Works has not received anything about this.
What we've talked about, we've talked about the marketplace, it's been going on for the last few years. So I think what we've typically done is have a. A meeting, a coordination meeting before we get started here, so.
Well, you said this weekend.
Well, for, no, no.
That, that's just for the special event at Bojo's.
Yeah, we need to do anything.
Well, we just need to move the barricades.
That's what I'm talking about. So we need a detailed list of what you guys want done. Now, that way there's no confusion.
Do you need a pre-meeting for this weekend?
I know, yeah, I'm gonna call that. There you go. Whoop, get up there and.
I understand.
Okay.
But then the other one's not until May the eighth.
And, you know, activation. I just.
Yeah, I.
Important issue, John's point is basically.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is last year, the guy spent a lot of time picking up trash.
One of the problems we have downtown is the trash cans no longer are effective. There's only very few trash cans in the downtown blocks of minor street. There's two useful ones and they're broken. So I think what we have been, I have a meeting tomorrow to talk to the CPW people. They have a new grant that provides airproof trash cans to cities and they'd like to do something for us. So we could potentially replace the trash cans and get better ones that are more functional. Um, and then if we need to do something else to address the trash problem.
I think twelve's got plastic ones.
Okay.
That, you know, the.
The bin kinder?
Yeah, there's, I don't know.
So anybody from Public Works should be there to.
Am I meeting tomorrow?
Or, yeah, review the type of trash cans or if they're feasible or.
No, sir, cause it's just for grant funding first and then we can, we can make sure that um. We haven't even written the application yet. This is just a pre-meeting to express our interest.
But yeah, the guy's user should be the ones.
Right, well, we haven't even selected trash cans yet. So I would, I would think the best thing would be if. Public Works selects the trash cans once we get to the point. If we're, if this grant works, but we don't have enough information to even apply yet. So it's just the beginning meeting, so I'll have everything for that.
Part of it continues, where we're gonna do with, with trash and the business not picking up.
Part of the new encroachment standard that we um deliver to all the businesses that they'll be signing and committing to. In the encroachment standard is a new requirement that they're responsible for the trash pickup in their areas. And also making sure um that they're being very cognizant of that. We are also starting a uh sponsored plot. Program with the Garden Club. Um, they're going to be helping um keep a lot of the flowers really beautiful, picking up cigarette butts out of all the flowers. As well as the bump outs that have some gardening and then they will be helping sponsor those areas as well. So that's kind of a business city partnership with the Garden Club as well. Um, I've had a lot of conversations with business owners, the managers, um about the importance of picking up trash. So we're hoping with this new focus on that, that it should be better than years past.
We, we can also um revoke their encroachment agreement if it's a continuous problem. So. I think that's the other side of it. We have to go down that route.
Yeah, it's just no public works is swamp. Add more stuff on, do one duly, it's not fair.
I can see at least their area, but we're talking about the street also, right? So.
I think that's right. If we can get some new trash cans downtown, it would help because you just don't have, they get overwhelmed really quickly.
I got one, John, down shops, want one, okay, cat or whatever, I'll give it to the city.
Okay. It might be nice like now too, cause we don't have, there's only the two, the ones we have that have wood slats on them, they've just been falling apart.
Yeah, I'm more than happy.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yep.
But we will, we will definitely coordinate with Public Works. We'll, we didn't mean to not coordinate on the Bojo's thing, so we'll talk with you. First thing and then um for the rest of it, we'll have another meeting. We'll also have another meeting about flower insulation. Um, that's on track for the first Thursday in July or June, I mean.
Next week.
Yeah. But.
We have another flower.
We, well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is we have another meeting. You can make sure Public Works is engaged in that process too.
Appreciate that. Anything else? Sadie, anything else you have to say?
Um, no, I think the big thing is just making sure that council is still comfortable with us um pursuing having outside vendors on minor. Um, through that process and all of the outside vendors would go through the same process that I'm requesting that the axe thrower go through. Which is that they would be going through um just getting a city of Idaho Springs business license and then. Um, making sure that we're listed as additional insured, especially the axe throwing vendor. But we do want to be able to start having a little bit more activation through that period. And we have quite a few people requesting um that as well as um having little pop-up. Can't do a farmer's market this year. We're way behind the game for that, but I can um get access to some pop-up. Um, produce vendors that are willing to come down um for a few. Pop-up things. So making sure that council is still comfortable with that and then knowing that um. We're just continuing to work on, you know, activating the market throughout the whole season.
Are we trying to get more events for the weekends other than what we have already scheduled or?
No, no more events on the weekend.
We're trying to avoid times when town gets really busy because we just don't have the capacity to manage it too well. Yeah, that's where we went to Thursdays and um, you know, some of those weeknight nights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you smoke people up here earlier.
I mean, the business license thing is key.
Yeah. Yeah, that's how we handle.
The expenses of the city as far as. Wonder's time or anything else.
They'd have to follow the same rules to like the twelve-foot aisle and all that. So we'd make sure that they weren't impacting Sadie or operation.
Also gives the police department emergency contact information. So if something were to happen, they.
Sure. Last thing I did wanna mention is that the city council approved last year giving the Chamber of Commerce ten thousand dollars for operations. The Chamber of Commerce has really, I think, done a good job this year of really engaging the community. The ISMA has merged into the Chamber fully now, so it's just the Chamber of Commerce. Sadie has agreed to do some more marketing work, so some of this money is gonna go into Sadie. To do this marketing work, which is almost a full-time job and she's running her own business and has her own things going on too. So she's really. Stepped into the gap here and done a really good job with the programming piece of this. And then the chamber is working on making sure that. Um, there's a really good value proposition for the city for that money and then that the business owners start seeing some value from the chamber as well. So that's something that we're working on pretty hard over there.
I, I do wanna bring up one, I guess, last thing that is something that the chamber is going to, wanting to work towards is that we, you know, as. The chamber has kind of said to, you know, paying me a, a, a small portion to help do this, we would like to start. Being able to um show uh proof of concept of working with the city in that position of kind of a director of. Marketing and activation within the chamber, which is the position that I'm currently filling. And in that role, what we would like to do is start to talk to city council, not this year, but as we move forward. That the chamber would be helping manage, activate and run the marketplace and. That is quite a large um chunk in a role. And in that, we would like to start um having conversations with council about. The understanding that if a business wants to activate or be a part of the minor street market, that they need to be a part of the Chamber of Commerce. Um, right now, not all businesses activating on minor, which is understandable. The Chamber of Commerce has struggled a lot over the last couple of years. Maintaining its consistency. We are rebranding, we're refocusing, we're really making sure that we're representing all the businesses in Idaho Springs. And giving value for what they're paying for. Um, but I think the goal would be to kind of talk about, um, you know. Some, somebody like me in a place is charged, I would charge like seventy-five dollars an hour to do this activation work. And so the value is then having the businesses that are benefiting from that activation work, you know, pay. A portion of being able to have that value done for them. Um, as well as um hopefully with this intern um coming forward, we'll have uh some of. Additional support and response from the city as well.
We're done? So?
Yep.
So we'll adjourn of workshop session. And we'll take a five-minute break, so six, ten, we'll reconvene. Sometime, reconvene.
Yeah, that's the regular agenda.
What was it changed from?
Everybody has.
Okay, okay.
Pretty well keeping us on track there.
I was a little worried we were gonna have enemies.
I lost all my stuff. No, I know. I'm learning.
I do that on the regular.
You guys just gotta like.
Nope, I, I think you, you made it work. I think that's, that's a big part of this.
This weekend, I knew something.
We'll uh, we'll definitely talk about it tomorrow. It'll be pretty simple. We can do that another day, but tomorrow.
When they redid downtown.
Oh, that was.
So when they did the sidewalk.
Just saying, next year you can be a minister.
It was paved in eighty-nine.
Is that it?
I remember sidewalk.
That's it.
Leave you guys out on the Bojo's. Are you gonna make a public comment?
No, 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 I, I didn't really get.
Well, that's my responsibility. And I think uh.
Well, you know, maybe talk to John.
What the hell, like, which? On the right? Are you guys coming there? Yeah, what a cool, what a cool idea.
Whenever you're ready.
We are ready.
All right, I'll call it order, the. Meeting for March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, uh seven eleven P M. We're called.
Mayor Chuck Hartman, Jim Clark.
Here.
John Curtis.
Here.
Kay Collier, Jeremy Jones.
Here.
Our Cat Cabeli, Scott Knell.
Here.
Thank you.
Was allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a liberal.
Uh, approval of agenda. There is one action, request for action item under uh Jones' staff report. One million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda for March twenty-seventh.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended for March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Okay. Any conflict of interest?
I do, sir. On the bills for Allied. If anybody has a question on that, I'd like to be clear. The uh it came out as just tire repair on a skid steer for four hundred and forty dollars. That wasn't
Just for that?
No. So.
Should we spread that out?
Well, it it was on three separate, and this is actually what it got on. There was two different separate tire repairs, and then there was ten skid steer tires.
Well, before we had two motions, so. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I won't be able to vote for acting idiot on on the approval of the bills for as a whole, and then so, I I'm sorry, I'll, I can vote
Great.
On
Okay.
everything except for mine, and then maybe another motion to in all state.
So we like a motion for all bills except for Mr. Clark's Allied toll.
I'll move to approve the minutes from March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah.
The minutes.
I'm waiting for a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aight.
Opposed? All right. Now.
Mayor, Mayor Pretend.
Uh, there also needs to be a vote on the uh um agenda approval, please.
Pardon?
Uh, there also needs to be a vote on the agenda approval, if you didn't actually have a vote on the agenda approval.
You know, I'm just trying to speed this. All right. So. Move to approve the agenda for March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. I already thought you made that one.
As amended, we just need, we just need a vote.
It was seconded, I think, by Jeremy.
Mayor Chuck Harmon, Jim Clark,
Yes.
John Curtis,
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones,
Yes.
Art Cackavale, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now, conflict of interest. Give me your slate, Ed.
We got that covered.
All right. Motion to approve the bills for March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
So I'll move approve the bills to March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Excluding the Allied bill.
Mayor Chuck Harmon, Jim Clark,
Yeah.
Mayor Pretend, John Curtis,
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones,
Yes.
Art Cackavale, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion for Allied towing bills?
I'll move to approve the bill to March twenty-seventh for the Allied towing.
Second. We're called.
Mayor Chuck Harmon, Jim Clark, Mayor Pretend, John Curtis,
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones,
Yes.
Art Cackavale, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hold it calm.
Mayor, we do have fellow comments.
Red, no, come on, say your name.
Yeah.
I'm Carl. Wrong side of Floyd Floyd Hill.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
Carl J. Koser, K O S E R, Carl with a K. Three-four-two-nine-three Pleasant Lane, Evergreen. Eight oh four-three-nine, the wrong side of Floyd Hill. Uh, I grew up here. Uh, we did business in Idaho Springs, I could tell stories about the Mines Theater and Three Stooges. Uh, I come representing Joanne Vivek, who's a resident, longtime resident at eight oh four Virginia Street, and she's given me a statement which I will have a couple of copies. Probably for the record, I guess this will end up being a thank you for approval of the leak water subsidy. Joanne wanted to address that, she has four lots, she uses a lot of water in the summers, and it's expensive. You know, there's probably, you probably don't set the rates. So, and on behalf of Joanne, I just say thank you. And keep up the good work, it's we had civics in grade school, but to see get in action is all does hard good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was it, man.
Why you in full office, sir?
Oh, Mayor Pretend and council members, nice to see you tonight. Here to go over the fi- February financial statements. And before I do, I'll just let you know that also the annual audit of twenty-twenty-two got started with the fieldwork today, and the auditors will be here, and they'll be here probably Thursday. And so far, so good that they take a look at these as well, and they test them to see if they're reasonable, and they pull samples, and they check this and that, and so this is like preliminary to them getting their hands on news, is when you guys have a chance to review it, so thanks for having me here um most of the time to go over them with you. One of your big duties as council members is um being good trustworthy fiduciaries of the city money that you're interested in. Starting with page one, we have the um combined cash, and again, we've got various accounts for various reasons that the money's in. And it's split up in ownership between all the funds that contribute to it and use it. Um, page two starts the general fund where most of your action is. Most of your general operations of a city government are. And it has two million dollars in the combined funds on page one. And a fund balance starting twenty-twenty-three, so ending last year, at this point, looks like one point nine million. Uh, there could be some changes in the course of the audit, um but right now it's looking like almost two million. Then if you step forward in your packet to the end of the general fund, which is on page twelve, you'll see the total expenditures listed there for twenty-twenty for this year's budget is three point nine million. So in your starting fund balances, you've got one point nine million, which means to run the city, you need to have revenues come in for that that other part of it, so that's why that a fund balance can be a very useful number to keep your your eye on, and it's what you've got to start with before you earn any more funds. Um, starting on page three, you see those revenues that are coming in. The third column from the right is the year-to-date actuals. And down at the bottom, it shows you sixteen percent of the fiscal year has elapsed at the end of February. So the percentages on the right kind of show you where you are on these revenues. And for the monthly ones, like the sales tax, you're at thirteen point five percent of the budget. And that's fine for February since it's kind of a slow part of the year for your sales taxes, and you've got, you know, close enough to sixteen percent coming in there. And you can look through the other ones and see how they look to you, but uh they generally look like they're on target. Some of them are quarterly, like the uh County Road and Bridge, and you've got twenty-six percent of those that are far, so. Moving on to pages five through twelve are the individual departments that are spending these monies that come in and the beginning fund balance. And they all seem on track, if you just even look at the totals for each department. They're at or around sixteen percent in general. Um, building inspection on page eight must have quite a big deal coming in right at the beginning of the year. Um, you're fifty-seven percent of that budget right now was for plan reviews, so what's going on, and uh you've got some staffing agencies, so there's things happening there. The lease is set at sixteen percent for the year, right on track for two months in. Quarter at seventeen percent, your quarterly contribution to the fire department has been made. So you're in good shape. And then just quickly going through the other ones, there's no action budgeted in the cemetery trust fund, you're holding the money of others there. Uh, the grant fund, you can start with this fund balance on page fifteen, shows during the year with almost seven hundred thousand dollars. And you're just gonna keep drawing that down until it's gone, that was for the Florida Boulevard Continued Maintenance. And there's been no activity in that so far in January and February. The improvement fund, that's your sales tax improvement fund, um on page eighteen. Um, I've always been highlighting these advances that have been made to the water and wastewater fund. And so here's some good news there on page eighteen, it's showing that you only have two lines there now, instead of you used to have five or six. And we did go ahead and, as we talked about during the budget process, repaid those smaller draw um loans inner inner fund loans that have been made from this fund to the water and wastewater funds. There's just part of the twenty-eighteen left, which can probably be paid back pretty easily in twenty-twenty-three. And then there's the whole amount from twenty-nineteen that we have said we would figure out how soon we want to pay that off during the course of this year's uh budget um preparation. So that's a good sign. More money now is in the cash than in the receivables for that asset sheet, the balance sheet there, the assets. Again, revenues and expenditures are as expected for this time of the year for that fund. The conservation trust fund, the lottery money that's shared comes in slowly, and you're watching that build up for some project in the future. Page twenty-four is the one percent. Free sales tax is starting the year with a million six eighty-five. So you've got a fair amount there to be used. You're expecting more revenues to come in of about a hundred and fifty-six thousand during the year. And you've got projects of a million five budgeted to use that that money for various street improvement projects. Then we get to the enterprise funds. The water fund has uh that beginning equity that's mostly in the ground or in the plant, those six million three. And you've got charges for services that are good for the um two months into the year, they're in at eighteen point three percent of budget, so a little higher than sixteen percent. And then your operations are a little lower than than even ten percent. So that fund is looking fine. And wastewater is similar, you've got charges for services coming in at twenty percent of budget so far. And your expenditures that are on page thirty six are at ten percent so far. The last one is your parking revenue fund, it was new last year. Uh, you had about twenty-four thousand a month come in in January and February for that parking revenue, and those are your, some of your slower ones. And then you've got um projects scheduled to be built as needed this year, based for parking as you perceive it, looking at that that project in the in the future. This pension fund is now gone, that's gonna be you see on page forty-one prior year actual amounts, and now there's no longer pensioner remaining that's receiving anything from this fund. Better be happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
You, council?
No, it was good to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
All right. Resolutions. Maybe I like to make a motion for resolution number five, series two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number five, series two thousand twenty-three, resolution approving memorandum of understanding among you in the city and Jackmine Mining Company concerning a potential land slot.
Second. So.
And discuss.
A discussion, I mean. Okay, we covered this workshop, so.
Is this, well, has this got a cap on how much we spend on design, or?
No, uh, uh, the design will come back to council when we come up with a proposal for the design.
But this approves the amount to get to that point.
This just approves the 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 um, again, it's not mining, but just approves the the general understanding between the property owner and the city as far as.
So we're not spending money yet?
That's correct.
Oh, I thought we were gonna spend a little bit of money here. Okay.
Nobody's been spent here.
Just moving forward.
Just moving forward.
This is a check-in with council.
Okay, we're called.
Okay. Mayor Chuck Harmon, uh Mayor Pretend, John Curtis,
Yes.
Jim Clark,
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones, Art Cackavale, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Orders first reading, may I get a motion for ordinance number seven, series twenty-three?
I'll move to approve ordinance numbers seven, series two thousand twenty-three, and ordinance repealing and reenacting section seventeen dash sixty-seven of the Idaho Springs Municipal Code concerning certain weapons possessions in response to federal case law.
Second. Any uh discussion? Hey. We're called, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon, Mayor Pretend, John Curtis,
Yes.
Jim Clark,
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones,
Yes.
Art Cackavale, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
City Attorney. They don't think he's on?
No.
Okay. All right, city administrator.
Uh, Mayor Pretend, I have two requests for action, please.
Okay, motion to approve service quote from Brownsville Engineering Controls from our which is gonna change one one hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars for PLC replacement at the water plant.
I'll make a motion to approve a service quote from Brownsville Engineering Controls, an amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars for programmable logic control PLC replacement at the water treatment plant, coming out of account number five-one-dash-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-nine.
I'll second.
Good. Do you wanna start off, Andy? I know Ed's gonna have some comments on this.
Uh, this is upgrades to the system that does the controls for our water treatment plant and the actual um the devices that actually are part of that system, and then actually the service to enable uh monitoring, it's a twenty-four-hour operation, so it's a critical part of um the water treatment plant um operation. So um, you wanna add anything to that, Ed?
Yeah, the uh, the PLCs that are up there were installed when the plant was, you know. So they're twenty-one years old. The uh last time that they're up there, we're up there most of the night with Brownsville trying to get them back up. The only place that we can get parts for this thing anymore are on eBay. And it's gonna be used um, used parts. So this will bring us up into two thousand twenty-three. PLCs usually last, uh Brownsville is saying ten years. So we've got twenty-one with these, we bring it us up into twenty-twenty-three. And with these key parts, it's a great environment for the computers to be, these could last as long as they keep making parts for the new stuff.
This is all of them, right, Ed? All your PLCs in one shot? Replacing all the PLCs in the plant, all one-shot?
All but one. One of them is upgraded to a Micrologix fifteen hundred.
Okay.
So it's already network compatible. Uh, it's the old ones, so we've got uh, three in the main plant and one in the Clearwell Building, so there's B four total.
Awesome, so bring all five up to to be network compatible, that's perfect.
Right.
Okay.
So is this line number for upgrades? Is that basically a budget line item for upgrades to the plant, or?
Uh, that's an operating line item, because it is an operating expense.
And this is something that just recently come up, that we need to upgrade this, right?
And this is actually gonna be paid over, can you explain that, Ed?
Right, so uh I've been working on this for several years. And we got a quote from Brownsville where last year was like a hundred and twenty thousand. And and John put that in the budget. He. Brownsville offered us to break that up amongst payments and add it on with the with the bill that we're already getting for the PM SCADA. Alright, so we paid Brownsville to maintain and back up the the uh, SCADA system, computers. And in order to add that on, we just split the bill up and then added that to the remainder of our return. Alright, so on that line item that uh. We're talking about. We had eighty-four thousand dollars on that line item. So if we do as uh, we're suggesting with Brownsville. The total at the end of the year is going to be eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for. And that's replacing the PLCs too. Then next year, it'll be ninety-eight, and then in March twenty twenty-five, they will will have to renew the contract. So then the price would go back down because we finished paying off the PLCs. And we'll be more in that in this sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars a month. But that would cover. And we can keep the PLCs on in twenty twenty-five. As covered for uh, backups, and if anything goes wrong with it, then it would kind of be on extended extended warranty.
So so bottom line, this service quote is not, although we need to have the entire amount here, it's not all coming out of this year's budget. As we are budgeted for that money in the line item, it's going to be over a couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I was going to recommend, approving the whole contract and just. Okay, roll call.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Chuck Harmon, Mayor Pro Tim John Curtis. Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay. Uh, get a motion to approve proposal from Terricon, amount of twenty-five thousand, sixty dollars.
I'll move to approve a proposal from Terricon in the amount of twenty-five thousand, sixty dollars for geotechnical. Engineering services related to rockfall assessment and my gate mitigation. At the water treatment plant, account number fifty-one dash seventy-two dash seventy-three, ten.
Second, one second. You want to start this, Paul, or Andy?
Uh, I'll start it out. Uh, this has been a concern up at the water treatment plant for quite a few years. As as you know, it's a very narrow canyon there, and there are steep walls on the um. Uh, right next to the some of the buildings and the green tank and. Rocks occasionally come off of those steep walls and either onto the roadway, but more importantly, sometimes they impinge on the buildings, the structures there. And that can be very costly to repair. It can also cause some failure of the operation. So this has been on the to-do list for quite a long time. And the first step is to do the geotechnical services to see exactly what needs to be done for rockfall mitigation. They're likely going to end up with some sort of a um, wire mesh or something like that, maybe a wall at the bottom or combination. But we need to have a plan for whatever is going to be done there. Kevin, you wanted to add?
This assessment, they're going to uh, they're really going to take a look at the. The risk of some of the rocks up there and and then maybe give us a an opportunity to see what kind of. Uh, how large some of those rocks that can fall down. Uh. I know that's a, this proposal also puts in engineering for the uh, the rockfall mitigation. Uh, we've taken a look at it. The green tank is the one that's really in the strike zone for this one. Uh, it's been hit by some smaller rocks before, uh, we can see the damage from that. This to prevent that from happening and and potentially prevent something larger that could be catastrophic to our water system.
Paul, are they sheep a problem to their tune?
I have not noticed the sheep through there. It doesn't mean that they're not there. It's just that we're not seeing them.
Sure. Well, they're a huge contributor to rockfall.
Sure.
Of course. Just wondering.
And if we worked with this Terricon before, how were they recommended or?
Uh, I, there were several vendors that were consulted for getting quotes and uh, this seemed to be the most responsive.
Didn't make you fall river.
And what we have done as a city, we've done work with Terricon for projects.
I think they did fall river too.
Maybe all the, all the regional stuff, Floyd Hill all the way down.
Yeah.
Door door, they've done all the engineering. They're very up to speed with the the risk.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Okay. Mayor Chuck Harmon, Mayor Pro Tim John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Passes. Uh, so some move, assistant city administrator.
Mayor Pro Tim and council, you have, I have one request for action.
And this is at the dais there at your place. It's a memo from John, active in addition to his to his uh, to the agenda.
I move to approve that the. Grant application for the Department of Local Affairs Energy Impact Assistance for one million dollars to support the Idaho Springs Highway one oh three water line replacement project.
Second. One second. Roll call.
Mayor Chuck Harmon, Mayor Pro Tim John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Kate Collier, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Art Caca Bailey, Scott Pennell.
Yes.
Motion passes, deputy city clerk.
Um, Mayor Pro Tim and council, you have my staff report for with no requests for information. As of I won't be here on the next meeting, I'm getting married.
Whoa.
Communities development planner.
Uh, Mayor and council, I did not submit a staff report. I've been out of town.
Police department chief.
Yeah. You have my staff report, no request for action. Uh, I do want to comment on a really great event we had on Saturday. Where uh, the gentleman that a deputy and an ISP D officer revived, they saved this person's life at the rec center. Um, we had about twenty-five people attend the event at the rec center and um, including the gentleman and his wife. Um, it was part of a. I would say a bigger team effort. The EMS folks purchased AEDs that they issued, which are the defibrillators. Uh, they issued those to all of ISP D and well, we had a couple, but we're going to get everybody will have them. The sheriff's department also has them issued, and um, they're very quick response. This person had no pulse. He was not breathing. And he was able to walk out of the hospital two days later. So. It was a really nice uh, celebration. That was a really positive thing to celebrate. So. We did share that with the the local paper, so I think there'll be something in the next paper about it. So just wanted to share that.
Good job.
Yeah.
Great job.
Great story.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
Always worse department. I turned in a staff report. I I have no question for action. These two gentlemen also doing a staff report. There were any questions on it? Any comments? Okay. Mayor and council. Bojo's fifth anniversary proclamation.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim, there's a proclamation there, if you wouldn't mind reading, reading it into the record. That should be in the packet towards the end.
Okay. Bojo's fiftieth anniversary proclamation, whereas Bojo's restaurant was founded in Idaho Springs by a longtime. President Chip Blair in nineteen seventy-two. Whereas Bojo has operated successfully as a family-owned business. In downtown historic district of Idaho Springs and maintains strong community ties over fifty years. Whereas Bojo has greeted Colorado-style pizza. And earned a worldwide reputation for mountain pies. Whereas Bojo's Idaho Springs has become. A ski tradition, you know, when, water lovers and favorite year-round dining destination for. Residents, outdoor recreation enthusiasts. Travels along I-70, whereas Bojo's believes in doing everything right. On our planet, which means a range of sustainability-focused methods. Whereas Bojo's has grown to be one of the largest capacity restaurants in Colorado. With six locations and plan to continue expansion. Whereas Bojo's will celebrate its fiftieth anniversary Saturday, April first, two thousand twenty-three. A day of fun facilities. Buy music and start treasure hunt. For an ounce of gold on Minor Street in front of the flagship. Restaurant in Idaho Springs, whereas to be resolved that by. Chuck Harmon or me? Chuck Harmon recognizes Bojo's fiftieth anniversary to earn. Urge everybody to celebrate on Saturday, April first, twenty twenty-three. Original Bojo's in downtown historic district of our Idaho Springs. Okay, letters of support. Support for Excel's Energy and United Power.
So uh, Mayor Pro Tim, I can address these. These are requests from Excel Energy and United Power to support their grant applications for. Fire mitigation projects uh, related to their power system. And um, just wanted to make sure council was aware of these letters of support uh, that have been signed by the mayor.
Any questions?
I have one other, are we done with that? I have one other item I was going to bring up. Did you bring up Andy, the award, George Jackson Award that's in our packet? Did you bring that?
I I have not mentioned, it wasn't my staff report, but I didn't mention it specifically, if you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah. So the city won the George Jackson Award. For the restoration of the Sixth Avenue Holmes House. They're recognized by the historical society.
Cool.
And the historical society will be coming back with, uh, this was a uh, paper certificate, but they want to present the city with a plaque. And that'll be coming up at a future meeting.
That place really does look great.
And there are some finishing touches that need to happen on that. The doors were being restored and the windows down at the shop down in Denver. And so in upcoming weeks, uh, that project will be wrapped up. There'll be some landscaping, the doors we put on and it'll.
They didn't show it, I want to break.
History?
No, history's not. History was the George Jackson Award.
Okay, this workshop is April fifth, you might sure read it equal fifth. Move to adjourn.